Good afternoon, everyone. My name is William Iannuzzi. I'm President of the Board of Education, and I would like to call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Iannuzzi.
Here.
Ms. Marius Brooks. Ms. Lewis. Ms. Castellano Minaya.
Here.
Ms. Clayton Fernandez.
Here.
Ms. Ross. Mr. Single.
Here.
Mr. Vega. Ms. Williams.
Present.
A quorum is present.
Colleagues, can I get a motion in a second to go immediately into executive session to meet with District Council and discuss the employment history of particular persons which may lead to the employment of a particular person?
So moved Williams.
Second, Castellano Minaya.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we should be back around 7 o'clock to open the public session of the meeting.
I think, I think this is the... So where do you, so where are you saying?
In the middle, like facing, facing the projector? Or like?
...
Good evening, everyone. My name is William Iainuzi. I'm president of the Board of Education and we are about to reconvene the public session of the meeting. Colleagues, can I get a motion and second to reconvene the public session of the meeting?
So moved, Castellano Minaya.
Second, Ross.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Colleagues, can I get a motion and a second to accept minutes of the Board of Education regular meeting held on March 4th, 2025, accept minutes of the Board of Education special meeting held on March 11th, 2025, and accept minutes of the Board of Education special meeting held on March 20th, 2025 as submitted by the Clerk and Secretary to the Board of Education?
So moved.
So moved, Clayton Fernandez.
Second, Castellano Minaya.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So our first item on the agenda is our Board of Education announcements. Do any of my colleagues have any announcements they would like to make?
I would like to celebrate some of the amazing educators that are a part of the Mercy STEM Ambassadors program. I had the honor and privilege of seeing their presentations last week and once again, I am blown away by the incredible dedication and innovation of our educators in support of student learning and future orientation. So congratulations to the STEM ambassadors and the faculty of Mercy University. It's such a wonderful grant and I hope that we continue to have New Rochelle represented strong.
Thank you, Ms. Castellano Minaya. Anyone else? I have two announcements. I had the pleasure to be at New Rochelle High School last Thursday for a couple hours, actually, where I got to be at the planetarium for the dedication ceremony for Mr. Bruce Zeller. That was amazing. So if you drive around the football field, his name is right there on the side of the building of the planetarium now. And then I also got the opportunity to spend the evening with some of our athletes who from my brother's keeper who got to meet and ask questions to a former Super Bowl champion, Ryan Grant, who won a Super Bowl on the Packers. So they had the opportunity to talk to him about athletics, but really the mental health aspect of athletics and what it's like when you don't have sports and after you retire. And so it was a really amazing event. And so I really want to thank the New Rochelle PTA Council and my brother's keeper for putting that together for those kids.
I also wanted to point out that the New Rochelle High School is putting on a career opportunity day for the classmen. And I think if you look into the website, you can see more about it. But I do think that's noted in this time. It's a great opportunity for our young students to have that interaction in the community.
Thank you, Ms. Clayton. Seeing no other announcements, I'm going to throw it over to Dr. Reynolds for the superintendent's update.
Thank you very much, President Iainuzi, to the board trustees. Good evening. To our community here in attendance, I welcome you this evening. To those of you who are watching at home, I welcome you also. And to those of you who will be watching at a later date, too bad you missed it. So tonight, we are going to begin with an acknowledgement. Is our assistant principal here, Mr. Spataro? I'm not going to... Can you stand up for a second, please? So today is Mr. Spataro's birthday, so let's wish him happy birthday. Happy birthday, sir. I don't think you knew that I knew that, but I was going to sing to you, but I think I'd be carried out of hair in a straitjacket. For our New Rochelle High School students, I want to acknowledge that New Rochelle Science Research students broke new records at the 2025 Regeneron Westchester Science and Engineering Fair. This is called WESF. At the competition held at Somers High School... Did I stare at this already? Okay, all right. The competition at Somers High School this past month, WESF is one of the most premier science competitions and science fairs and the largest one in New York State. The 2025 event featured over 750 students and 500 judges. Our 29 talented young scientists earned a total of 33 awards. And they brought home more than $11,500 in cash and prizes. Among the highlights were five first-place awards, our most ever, and three juniors advancing to the prestigious Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair, ISF, in Columbus, Ohio, which will take place next month. The science research program's momentum has been building steadily under the leadership of the program's teachers, Mr. Jeff Weber and Erica Corin. Can we give them a round of applause, please? Last year, New Rochelle High School made history when... Now, I'm going to have difficult... I have a whole bunch of names to call, so please, if I mispronounce your name, please forgive me. It's from the brain and not from the heart, okay? So, where was I? So last year, we had the most historically, the most students who were able to win. And when Imad Uzun and Karun Kula Mavallavan became the first students in school history to win awards at ISF, earning top honors in mathematics, plant science, and service to society. Their international recognition marked a watershed moment for the program. And earlier this year, senior Elena Coelho Adams was named a Regeneron Science Talent Search Scholar, one of only 300 students nationwide to earn that honor for her original research on graphene color synesthesia. I can't even pronounce her title, much less imagine the work that she's done. The New Rochelle WESF award winners are first-place winner Lauren Bryan, Liliana Ferrante, Carlos Del Aguiar... Liliana Ferrante, Carlos Del Aguiar, Scarlett Hartsman, and Cory Selenfrond. Second place winners Elena Adams, Jacenia Abrego, Brianna Sinkfield, Sophia Fuentes, Alexa Guzman, and Karun Kalamavallavan were also winners. And our third place winners were Farhin Paratcha, Daniela Anna Sarfo, Madeline De Fabia, Brian Mesagil, Erin Palermo, and Kiara Sedva. Now, the reason why I want to take the time to call each of our students' names is oftentimes, we recognize our students for their athletic prowess. I think it's equally important to recognize them for their academic prowess as well. Also, a part of the reason why I'm so proud of this is because all of these students are the culmination of the work of our teachers and our adults that care for them all throughout the school system. So that is why we are focusing tonight on our high school students. Our fourth place winners Max Strasberg, Octavia Liku, and Joseph Francois should be recognized as well. I have more names. So Benjamin Fusco was awarded for Excellence in the Application of Artificial Intelligence. Charlotte Fusco was recognized for Association for Women Geo-Scientists Award. Esther Hetchukwu received the NASA Earth Systems Science Award. Nora Khan received the BASF Expanding Knowledge in Science Award. Lucas Pouchek received the RICO Sustainable Development Award. Noah Rosenkrantz received the Visionary Engineering Award and the David M. Holmes WESF Engineering Innovation Award. Claire Shedva received the Excellence in Medical Research Award. Anaya Traynor received the US Stockholm Junior Water Prize. And Alexandra Zalatis received the Innovations in Biological Sciences Research Award. For those of you who don't understand what science research is, it's basically a high school student completing college and post-college level... completing college and post-college level research, putting their work together into a written body, which would be called a thesis anywhere else, and having to present that through a dissertation-style expression of knowledge to a panel. So the work that they're doing, college students and master's students and doctoral students are doing, and some of our individuals are working with NASA. So this is huge. The three New Rochelle High School grand prize winners and ISF qualifiers, Carlos Del Aguiar, Scarlett Hartsman, and Cory Selenfrond are among the elite 1,800 students nationwide who have earned a spot to compete at ISF. Carlos's project analyzed NIH grant distribution and demographic data to show that increased community diversity may correlate with more equitable funding outcomes. Hmm, imagine that. Cory's project, and I like his name, used large-scale simulations and mathematical modeling to test how memory and strategy affects cooperation in competition. And Scarlett used topographical data and satellite imaging to create rover-accessible pathways across Mars. Her designs connect critical research sites and making future Mars exploration safer and more scientifically productive. New Rochelle truly crushed it this year. Let's give everybody another round of applause. Please be reminded that on Monday, April 28th, at the New Rochelle High School Whitney Auditorium at 7:00 PM, the New Rochelle Fund for Educational Excellence and its Jeremy Scheinfeld Publishing Center will hold the 27th Annual Poetry Out Loud Celebration. Poetry Out Loud is a powerful night where 3rd through 6th grade students from across our schools share their unique views of the world through a poetic lens in their own voices. Also, please keep in mind that the SEPTA annual event, the We Are One Awards, is around the corner. We will be celebrating with a dinner on Thursday, May 1st, at 6:00 PM at the VIP Country Club in Rochelle, so please be sure to save the date. And finally, and our parents might boo me in this moment... It won't be the first time. All schools will be closed from Monday, April 14th through Friday, April 18th for spring recess. All offices will be closed on Friday, April 18th. Schools and offices will reopen on Monday, April 21st, 2025. And with that, Mr. President, I have concluded my report, and I relinquish the microphone to you, sir.
Thank you very much, Dr. Reynolds. So next up on our agenda are discussion items, with the first one being the Jefferson presentation. So colleagues, can we go sit in the front row? Please bring your mic with you. And, Dr. Reynolds, I'll let you set the stage.
So as my board colleagues transition to the audience, I'm going to ask us to be prepared to receive a night of entertainment and a night of education. Tonight, we are going to be led down the path of discovery, of education, and excellence that takes place here at the Jefferson Elementary School. We're going to be led down that path by our administrative team, of course, under the leadership of the principal of Jefferson Elementary School, Ms. Kimberly Niabes.
Good evening, Board of Education President, Mr. Iainuzi, Board of Education members, Superintendent Dr. Reynolds, Assistant Superintendent, District Administrators, colleagues, and community members. Tonight, I have the pleasure and honor to speak on behalf of the Jefferson community. We have an exciting agenda for tonight, but we are going to begin with Jefferson's Tiger Tones, so if we can give them a round of applause and welcome them to the stage. Thank you, Jefferson Tiger Tones. You guys are awesome. Let's give them another round of applause. Okay, the students will now exit to the cafeteria, and parents can meet the children there. So please let them get there first. Good job! Good job, guys. Good job, everybody.
Hi, Ms. Niabes.
How are you? Trying, trying, trying. How are you? Nice to meet you. Thank you. Hi, thank you. How are you doing?
Good. Oh, I love that you don't step. I love that.
Have a good night.
Better than yesterday. Have a good one.
We need to water you, so you're gonna knock 'em dead. Okay, if I could have your attention again, please. Tonight, we have a very exciting evening. We will be celebrating the power of culturally responsive, sustaining education through a science lens. You will have the opportunity to hear from some of our fabulous Jefferson educators. We're going to take a deep dive into how the CRSE framework is enriching our science instruction at Jefferson Elementary and how it's making a lasting impact on our students. Let's get started. Behind me are our district's vision and mission statements, which Jefferson has embraced wholeheartedly. What resonates with me personally is our focus on nurturing the whole child and offering a high-quality education that prepares our students for future academic and life endeavors. This aligns perfectly with our work in creating culturally responsive science education. As a school, our demographics remain similar to past years. We continue to celebrate the beautiful diversity within our student body. This diversity is a cornerstone of how we approach education, particularly through a culturally responsive lens, and it's what makes our community so special. Jefferson has a collaborative leadership team made up of educators from various disciplines. Together, we all support our school's vision and mission. It's through this team that we are able to align our practices with the district goals. At Jefferson, our faculty and staff are a diverse group of individuals, each bringing their own unique backgrounds and experiences to the table. What unites us is our dedication and our commitment to our students. I'm incredibly proud of our teachers and staff, especially as we shift our mindset toward more inclusive, culturally responsive instruction. They have shown incredible openness and receptiveness to change, and I'm deeply grateful for their continuous growth and support. Our district strategic roadmap is centered on providing a high-quality education to every child. Our staff cultivates a safe and diverse learning environment where children are both engaged and challenged. It's this roadmap that guides our work, especially in the way we implement the CRSE framework in science education. Here at Jefferson, we are addressing all four principles of the Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education Framework, specifically through the lens of science education. Our goal isn't to ensure that our curriculum and instruction reflect the diverse cultural backgrounds of our students. Tonight, you'll hear from our whip-ro team, which has created a welcoming and affirming environment. They have had an incredible impact on our school community. Their work has been a key part of our success, and we'll introduce them towards the end of the presentation. We will also discuss how we are meeting high expectations and rigorous instruction. Through our Tier One classroom instruction, we challenge students with grade-level texts and rigorous scientific concepts. Our Engineering Elementary, also called EIE, ensures an inclusive curriculum where students engage in hands-on experiments that address real-world problems. Tonight, we'll also be discussing how our building science leaders provide ongoing professional development, ensuring that our teaching practices stay culturally relevant, responsive, and aligned with the shifts in science education. In following the four CRSE principles, we have addressed the dramatic shifts in science education. A major shift in the science standards involves moving away from rote memorization and instead focusing on critical thinking and problem-solving. Excuse me for one minute. It's not working? Okay. Sorry about that, folks. I'm gonna start again on this slide because I just lost my train of thought. A major shift in the science standards involves moving away from the rote memorization and instead focusing on critical thinking and problem-solving. Our students are no longer just memorizing facts. They are experiencing science through hands-on investigations. They use higher-order thinking skills to tackle real-world problems and engineer creative solutions. This shift takes... This shift takes science out of the classroom and into the world, where our students can make a tangible difference. Now, I'd like to introduce Gillian Reschenko, a talented literacy coach and reading teacher at Jefferson. She will continue to discuss the challenges with the shifts in science education.
I promise the slide will be worth it if you wait for the clicks. I know the board had the bookmarks up there. If you scan the QR code, it's gonna link to a folder of all of our science work. We're trying to be sustainable without handing out a whole bunch of packets. So you could scan the code, and then you could see a lot of the stuff that we're doing here. Is it not gonna work? Okay, then I'll just have to wing it. I spend a lot of time on these little clicks, so you'll see what I mean. Okay, now, I don't know what happened. This is the P... Sorry, we had a PowerPoint and everything highlighted and had a little animation and video, but it's all right. Okay, so last year, I had the pleasure of presenting our shifts in literacy instruction. This year, sorry, presenting shifts in literacy instruction, which focused on building background knowledge and vocabulary. Tonight, I want to highlight the importance of those two areas, but specifically in science. So, let's take a look here. To emphasize the shifts that Principal Nieves just mentioned, let's look at this slide. On the left, you have a question from the 2019 state test. And it says, "In order for the car to be moved by the magnet, the car must contain which material?" Everyone probably knows the answer there. Now, compare that to the question on the right, which is from the 2024 test. The student inspected the data to determine the relationship between the voltage of the battery and the magnetic force exerted by the electromagnet. Which question was most likely being investigated? You could see here that we have our Tier One, our Tier Two vocabulary words are highlighted in red, and our Tier Three, which are domain-specific, that have to be explicitly taught, are highlighted in green. In the question on the left, there's only one Tier One, one Tier Two, and one Tier Three word. But if you look at the question on the right, clearly you see the difference. They have eighteen exposures to Tier Three vocabulary. The difference is clear, and this is essential to teach vocabulary and background knowledge for understanding these science concepts. To meet this challenge, we must go beyond just science instruction. In line with the CRSE Framework Principle Two, high expectations and rigorous instruction, we ensure that our Tier One instruction is student-centered, inclusive, and engages students with complex content across all subjects. This approach sets high expectations and provides rigorous instruction that encourages critical thinking and deeper engagement. At Jefferson, we focus on providing a comprehensive education in the disciplinary core ideas as they're related to science. Our literacy curriculum integrates science-based units, helping students develop both reading skills and a deeper understanding of scientific concepts. This approach prepares students for the increasingly demanding tasks and ensures that they build a solid foundation as they move to more challenging topics. We maintain high academic standards and differentiate instruction, ensuring that all of our students, regardless of their background, have access to a rigorous grade-level content. Our curriculum revisits and reinforces concepts from earlier grades, supporting scaffolded learning that meets high expectations. In addition to science classes, students engage with topics like engineering, physical science, Earth and space science, and life sciences throughout these interdisciplinary units. It strengthens both their reading and their science skills. This comprehensive approach prepares students for high-level thinking, problem-solving, complex assessments, and ensuring that they have the support needed to meet these high standards. Along with our rigorous Tier One instruction and in line with the third CRSE Framework Principle of inclusive curriculum and assessment, we focus on providing an equitable and culturally responsive curriculum that reflects the diverse backgrounds and identities of our students in science. Here at Jefferson, we use the Engineering is Elementary curriculum as a science resource. This inclusive curriculum engages students in hands-on engineering challenges based on real-world global issues. As highlighted on the map, each unit immerses students in a different part of the world, addressing authentic challenges that are faced by people in these regions. Through these units, students engage and read alouds aligned with our Curriculum Assessment Evaluation Review, or known as the CAR framework. In addition, students design solutions and gain cultural awareness through their learning. For example, the fourth-grade unit, Laredo Cooks Up a Plan, is inspired by a true story from Botswana, where a shortage of firewood made cooking difficult. The main character is inspired by her female cousin, who is studying sustainable engineering, and creates solar ovens to help the women of the village. The assessment piece is a culminating project that challenges students to design and build their own solar ovens, even making a delicious s'mores treat. These units teach engaging engineering and problem-solving skills while also helping students develop a global perspective by addressing real-world challenges. This approach fosters curiosity and a deeper understanding of the world around them. Now, I would like to turn the microphone over to Mrs. Sandy Russert, one of our amazing kindergarten teachers and Westchester STEM Ambassador. Her classes had a wonderful experience with this resource, showing that even our youngest learners can engage in the engineering and design process. So, there'll be a video, it won't play unfortunately, but you can see it if you scan that QR code later. Oh, maybe it will play? Oh, hold on one minute, maybe it will play.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Engineering is Elementary, or EIE, is a program that helps the children develop problem-solving skills through real-life experiences. In the kindergarten unit, raising the roof, designing shelters, kindergartners learn to be engineers and build shelters for an animal that needs protection from the sun. EIE stresses the design process of ask, plan, create, and improve. EIE fosters CRSE framework and growth mindset. It encourages resilience. When the teacher presents the problem and asks the question of "How can we help an animal?", the instruction provides opportunities for critical thinking. It encourages risk-taking, and the students tend to persist longer in the face of challenges. It improves motivation. The plan and create stages of the program allows students from different backgrounds and cultures to work together in the classroom and share their ideas. These diverse peer partnerships foster growth mindset that can improve understanding and lead to increased effort and engagement during the activity. It enhances performance in the classroom. After students create their structures, students have a chance to test their creations with tools such as flashlights, to see if light filters through. This allows students to make improvements by learning from their mistakes. Students that actively demonstrated their efforts and learning strategies showed overall improvement in understanding the content matter and therefore improved academic performance in the long run. An inclusive curriculum, such as EIE, encourages understanding of diverse perspectives. It allows even the youngest of learners to believe that they can be engineers and feel they are making a positive social change within their world. True, their work is not perfect, but these experiences allow students to take ownership of their work and gives them the confidence and the voice that hopefully they will build upon in the years to come. And now, I would like to introduce you to our third-grade teacher and science leader, Amy Ferguson.
In alignment with Principle Four of the CRSE Framework, Ongoing Professional Learning, we actively participate in reexamination and inquiry groups with peers integrating culturally relevant practices. Through meaningful collaboration with all stakeholders, we ensure that our professional development promotes inclusive, high-quality instruction. At Jefferson Elementary School, we emphasize ongoing and collaborative professional development in science. By working closely with our science leads, Monica Argentina, Lucia Brea, and Kelly Bichelia, and myself, we cultivate meaningful discussions that engage our community. Our professional development opportunities bridge the gap between academics and our students' diverse backgrounds, all while focusing on the science learning standards. We use phenomena to spark curiosity and deepen understanding across grade levels. We provide updates on district resources, including differentiated curriculum and aligned learning goals, considering its vertical and horizontal connections. Additionally, we share effective teaching methods which encourage making observations, such as claim evidence reasoning and see, think, wonder, to actively engage students. Our commitment to professional growth is to support every student's mastery of science concepts, celebrating the diverse cultures and abilities of our community. At Jefferson, we understand that student achievement takes many forms. We empower educators to amplify all student voices fostering not only scientific understanding, but to also create innovative ideas about the future of science. At a recent professional development meeting, a teacher shared a lesson she did with her students. It was about planting, and it was authentic. She used the five E model: engage, explore, explain, elaborate, and evaluate. She listened to students' questions, connected the lessons to her class community, and empowered students to have a voice in shaping their learning. Through this, she helped them make meaningful connections and even encouraged them to transform the world around them. By asking questions such as, "What do plants need to grow?", and "Where do the best crops thrive?", she connected the lessons to students' existing knowledge, allowing them to shape the direction of the lesson. Additionally, she made the lesson culturally relevant by incorporating picture books that reflected diverse ethnicities and languages, mirroring the backgrounds of her students. By allowing the teacher to offer her insights during the meeting, emphasized the importance of including personal experiences into the curriculum while honoring students' voices. This is just one example of how we remain committed to focusing on activities that resonate with Jefferson community members. But now, you all will hear more examples on how we bring this commitment to life. Ashley Ramirez, bilingual school psychologist and Whiprow Science Fellow, will share them.
Good evening, everyone. In following Principle One of the CRSE Framework, Jefferson partnered with the Whiprow Science Education Fellowship to enhance our welcoming and affirming environment. This partnership fosters respect, representation, and positive relationships by valuing diverse perspectives and encouraging student and family engagement. Whiprow is the glue that brings together educators from all disciplines, fostering a shared curiosity for science. Our team at Jefferson Elementary was first formed in the fall of 2022 and includes Amy Ferguson and Vicky Candelova Sekia, third-grade teachers; Gillian Reschenko, the only New York State Whiprow Fellow who is a literacy facilitator; and two bilingual school psychologists, Dr. Michelle Memoli and myself, who are the only school psychologists in the nation to be part of Whiprow. This interdisciplinary approach strengthens both student success and our adult learning community. Through collaboration and reflection, we make science accessible to all. We were proud to represent New Rochelle and present at the National Science Teaching Association Conferences in Denver and New Orleans, showcasing the work we've done in our community through our project. We remain committed to aligning our work with current trends in science education by fully implementing the New York Science Learning Standards. Additionally, we support the integration of the New York State Computer Science and Digital Fluency Standards, ensuring a comprehensive approach to STEAM learning. As we share our experiences with all aspects of science, we remain committed to supporting the full implementation of the New York Computer Science and Digital Fluency Standards. At the heart of our work is a commitment to culturally responsive education. Whiprow creates a welcoming and affirming environment where students and educators feel respected and valued. We uphold high expectations, foster critical thinking, and ensure an inclusive curriculum that empowers students to challenge bias and connect learning to the real world. Just as importantly, through our work as a team, we embedded social-emotional learning using the CASL framework, helping students develop self-awareness, strong relationships, and responsible decision-making. But this is just the beginning. Our commitment to sustaining and growing these initiatives remains strong. Now, I would like to welcome back Amy Ferguson, who will share an overview of Whiprow.
So, let me tell you all about Whiprow. So, the Whiprow Science Education Fellowship is a global initiative formed by Dr. Arthur Eisenkraft. It brings together staff and faculty from various disciplines to enhance STEAM education. Our school has partnered with Whiprow since 2015 to foster professional learning, link projects with school goals, and create impactful experiences that improve instruction and inspire science enthusiasm. In collaboration with leaders like Dr. Megan Marrero, Dr. Amanda Gunning, and Carmen King from Mercy University, we continue to strengthen science education. Our ongoing collaboration with Deep Reflection ensures that best practices are happening across classrooms. This Whiprow work aligns with the City School District of New Rochelle's Equity Vision, which celebrates individuality and embraces differences as strengths. This vision creates an inclusive, high-expectations environment that supports continuous learning, fostering a community where everyone's contributions are heard and valued. As Whiprow's district science coordinator, I can confidently say that the fellowship's promise is to make science accessible to all. We love empowering educators and offering different science experiences. This is our goal, to empower everyone intellectually, emotionally, and socially. This goal has been at the core of our work at Jefferson Elementary School. Now with excitement, I introduce you all to Vicky Candelova Sekia, who will tell you more about our work and our Whiprow-led events.
Good evening. At Jefferson, we're committed to fostering a welcoming and affirming environment where students, families, and educators feel seen, heard, and valued. Through our partnership with Whiprow, we've engaged in meaningful work that connects students, teachers, and the broader community. For students, we've hosted hands-on tinkering events, a lunchtime robotics club, and an engaging read-a-thon that brought SEL and robotics books into every classroom. Our science school assemblies, including Regeneron Robotics for kindergarten, have encouraged curiosity and critical thinking. For families, we've provided technology parent workshops and literacy events that strengthen the homeschool connection. And for educators, our professional development has supported shifts in science instruction, digital fluency, and computer science, ensuring that learning is rigorous and inclusive. To help us bring all of these events to life, we deeply value the support of Kim Nieves, our principal, Sal Swetar, our assistant principal, and Edward Castro, Director of Community and Family Engagement. By centering culturally responsive practices, we are empowering students to take academic risks, challenge perspectives, and become agents of change within their community. Please be sure to view the poster boards in the hallway on the side here that highlight the numerous events that took place. Now introduce Dr. Michelle Memoli, our bilingual school psychologist, and she'll discuss community partnerships and grants.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming and listening to our wonderful presentation on all of the intellectual stimulation that happens here at Jefferson across all of our learners and stakeholders. So here, sustainability and enrichment continue through our commitment to social-emotional learning and STEAM initiatives, underscoring our collective approach to supporting the whole child reaching within our village and across our village. And as you see on the slide, we have many, many, many... And as you see on the slide, we have many, many, many community partnerships. Here at Jefferson, we are supported in-house by our Green and Blue Long Island Sound Schools Network, and of course, our leadership committees within our building and across district. And we always thank everyone for the support we receive to promote our learners and our family interactions. Here, we continue to engage with the community at large to offer meaningful and inclusive programming, which has been based on direct feedback from our community of parents, educators, and children through data-informed surveys. We've had a request, especially from our parents, to continue to expand our science, technology, engineering, art, and music programming. And this really spearheaded a lot of the continued community work we've been involved with. So, our school continues to put a lot of thought, as you can see, into developing a well-rounded, forward-thinking environment for our students and the community to include all stakeholders. Our partnerships with organizations like Mercy University, Regeneron, STEM Alliance, and Welbotics are especially impressive, as these opportunities are really connecting our children and community at large with real-world science opportunities in many meaningful ways. A shining example of recent collaborative efforts is seen with our partnership between Volunteer New York, Regeneron, and Welbotics. We are in our second season of hosting Regeneron and Welbotics, who've partnered with all of our kindergartners to teach them basic coding of emotions. And this opportunity was guided by real-life scientists. And Dr. Reynolds, we appreciate you sharing about all of our wonderful scientists at the secondary level. We're building those scientists right here, as young as four and five years old. In addition, this year, our third graders had the opportunity, through our partnership with STEM Alliance, to visit the Westchester Children's Museum. There, our children were scientists in action with experiential learning, and each and every youngster had the opportunity to experiment and create elephant toothpaste. We look forward to continued opportunities as such. Please note, these partnerships exemplify our dedication to creating an enriching educational environment for all. We can go on and on about that, but please check the QR codes. And now, back to our illustrious leader, with whom none of this would be happening. So thank you, Ms. Neves.
Okay. So tonight, we've shared how Jefferson is building a culturally responsive and sustaining environment through our science education practices. Our Whiprow team has been integral in creating a welcoming and affirming environment that engages all stakeholders: students, parents, teachers, and staff. We are committed to maintaining high expectations in our Tier One instruction, offering students rigorous learning opportunities. Programs like Engineering is Elementary are part of our inclusive curriculum, where students address global issues and engineer solutions. Our science leaders continue to support teachers through ongoing professional development, ensuring that our practices remain culturally relevant and sustaining. Thank you for being part of the celebration of culturally responsive science education tonight. We're going, before I conclude the evening, I'd like to take the opportunity to congratulate It is a pleasure to recommend Ms. Maria Garcia for tenure as a bilingual school social worker. Maria is an invaluable member of our school community, consistently demonstrating exceptional dedication to the students, families, and the broader Jefferson community. Maria's skills are a tremendous asset, allowing her to provide support to a diverse range of families. She has established strong partnerships with community organizations such as the United Way of Westchester, the Sharing Shelf, ensuring that our families in need have access to critical resources. Her work with these organizations goes above and beyond the typical expectations. Within the school, Maria is active and an essential member of numerous committees, such as the Sunshine Committee, the Multicultural Committee, the SEL Committee, the Care Bear Committee, and the Attendance Team. She's highly collaborative, providing counseling services to both general and special education students, and her ability to build trusting relationships with all students is excellent. Her work helps create an inclusive and supportive environment for everyone, and she plays a key role in ensuring that each student feels seen and heard. Above all, Maria is caring, compassionate. She's an individual who consistently puts the needs of the children and families first. Her genuine love for all of her work and commitment to our school community are evident in everything she does. Maria is an outstanding social worker who brings immeasurable value to Jefferson, and I wholeheartedly recommend her for tenure. Our next recipient is our second bilingual school social worker, Ms. Adalia Mendez. As one of our dedicated social workers, Adalia has consistently demonstrated exceptional professional qualities, including an unwavering commitment to supporting our students, fostering a positive school climate, and strengthening relationships between our school and the community. Adalia's work in providing counseling to both general and special education students has been instrumental in supporting their social and emotional development. She is known for her compassionate approach, which allows her to build strong, trusting relationships with students, helping them navigate their academic and personal challenges. In addition to her counseling role, Adalia has proven to be an invaluable member of multiple school committees as well, including the SEL Team, the Multicultural Committee, the District Climate Committee, and the Safety Committee. Her contributions to these committees have made a significant improvement on the school environment, supporting positive behavior, inclusivity, and a safe environment for both students and staff. Furthermore, Adalia plays a crucial role in supporting communication between our families and the school. Her work with teachers to develop positive behavioral intervention strategies has helped foster a cooperative and proactive learning environment. Adalia's kindness and professionalism and passion for her work make her an outstanding asset to Jefferson Elementary School. I have no doubt that she will continue to have a positive impact on her students, their families, and our entire community. It is with great pleasure that I offer my highest recommendation for Adalia's tenure at Jefferson. Congratulations, Ms. Garcia. Congratulations, Ms. Mendez. And that concludes our program for tonight. Thank you, everyone, for your attention this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Neves. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Ms. Ross?
I just wanted to commend you for just such an excellent program for your students. Just thinking about that artificial intelligence has become such a big, big topic, and thinking about what the future of the workforce would look like, and how do we prepare our students to be ready for what the future is going to be. And so this is so important and so exciting to hear that, you know, four- or five-year-olds are starting to get exposure to all the different types of careers, but also just interaction with technology, and more just being a consumer of it, but actually how to create it is amazing. So I just want to commend you for doing that, because I think it's just an invaluable skill for all of our students as they go into kind of whatever this new world of work will look like.
Thank you. And I'd just like to say that I have to be very appreciative of the teachers, the clinician, and the staff, because they're making this all happen.
Fantastic.
Would any of my colleagues have any comments? Ms. Williams?
Thank you. Thank you, Principal Neves, and to your stellar team. And congratulations to Ms. Garcia and Ms. Mendez for being granted tenure. Thank you. Well deserved. And thank you for this science presentation. When I was a youngster, I loved science, and I began my school career here at Jefferson School. And I remember my kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Reichman, telling us, "We're going to go to the lavatory." And I was like, "Oh, wow, we're gonna do some science experiments." So she took us to the lavatory, and I said, "Oh, this is the bathroom." But I really love science, and I'm really excited for our students now that they get to do so many scientific investigations. And do we use BOSI Science 21 as our curriculum?
We use Discovery Education.
And I-
It's one of the resources.
It's one of the resources. And I just have a question about slide number 10, the New York State, New York Elementary Science Core Curriculum. There's a big shift from 2019 until 2024. By any chance, do you know what grade level this is?
That's the fifth-grade assessment, and that we wanted to show you the changes, especially to focus on the vocabulary, because there's such a big difference.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Castro?
2018 was fourth grade, but the state test has now been changed to fifth grade. And 24.
Thank you.
Thank you for not shying away from science. Sometimes it feels like with the shifts in our, in standards, there's so much focus on literacy and math, but to the exclusion of science. And science, especially when we think about multilingual learners too, can make students feel so successful and so brilliant, like we know that they are, and give them the opportunity to just tap into their curiosities, their brilliance, social collaboration, academic discourse. And for any of us who have actually seen the elementary science test, it is a reading test. It is a shock when you see it for students and teachers alike, work to our students every day, all year, and then to see that exam, it's really a reading test. And so often, the correlation of the science results is so similar to the reading, to the ELA scores, because it is a reading test. So what are some of the ways that you're helping make sure that our students, upon seeing that assessment, they're not shutting down, that they still have this joy and excitement like we see in all these photos, particularly empowering multilingual learners who might not yet be reading at grade level? They're on their way, they will get there. But what are some of the ways that you're supporting them with literacy through science? And also, just a huge kudos, it's clear that everyone in the school, music teacher, social workers, clinicians, everyone is a teacher of science. And I just want to pause and applaud you for that.
I'm very grateful to our building science leaders, because they've taken initiative to support the entire building, which has been wonderful. And you were asking about literacy connected to science. Ms. Roshenko was talking about that earlier with the Tier Two and Tier Three vocabulary. So we've been spending a lot of time on vocabulary development, so there's that connection to literacy, to science, to support our learners. And when it comes to multilingual learners, there's cognates, there's so many different things that you could do to support students. There's hands-on projects. I see Ms. Brayah behind you, she's our STEAM teacher shaking her head. She's always doing projects with students and collecting all different types of items, so children really have an opportunity to experience different things.
Anybody else? Yeah, that's clear.
I fell in love with the choir. Oh, my goodness. That choir and the song, it, if that, that should be kind of duplicated on a record. It's a great song, they did a great job. And thank you for letting us feel the energy of that hard work.
Thank you. I hope everyone remembered the song from the 80s.
I just want to echo my colleagues. Learning more about this engineering and elementary curriculum, it was really great to see the relevancy and like the fun coming into curriculum like that. I mean, just looking at the pictures for the, the Smores Pizza Oven, that's just like such an amazing thing, and the kids probably loved that. And I do want to give kudos to you, Ms. Neves, and your team, for really making the, what Jefferson is known as, is that sustainability in science school, and it's becoming, and all your work with the Green Schools Committee. So I really want to give kudos to you and your team for that, because it's amazing to see. And I do owe an apology to Ms. Sotaro. I was singing "Happy Birthday" until I saw the Mets sign up there, and I had to stop. But, jokes aside, happy birthday, and thank you guys so much.
So to Ms. Neves and her team, I want to thank you for taking down, taking us down this path of discovery. This evening, it was very purposeful that I started our conversation with information about science on the secondary level. It was very purposeful that that conversation threads all of the work that's being done in the elementary schools, in the middle schools, all the way through high school, so that we get to our culmination. This evening, I was, and I'm going to violate executive session confidentiality for a minute. This evening, we were talking, I was talking to the board, and one discovery that we had was, it's okay in education to make a mistake, as long as you learn from your mistake and you don't repeat it again. That same application applies to science. In school, we are tested on questions, and you either get the question right or wrong. But when you talk about science exploration, it's about making mistakes, learning from those mistakes, reapplying it to your learning and to your discovery, until you come, come with a breakthrough that becomes a revelation in science. That's how we have light, that's how we have all of, Velcro. I mean, Velcro was made for NASA. Who knew that I would need it on my sneakers one day, right? So all of these avenues of discovery were only allowed post-elementary, post-secondary school. It is so enriching, so exciting, that we are allowing that level of discovery as early as kindergarten, that we are leading that level of discovery through well-informed and professionally-developed teachers who receive that ongoing training to better master their craft. So I want to commend you for taking our kids through that discovery in the way that you do, and I want to thank everybody here for being that shepherd through learning. So thank you very much for your presentation this evening. We're going to begin to switch our conversation to our next presentation. I just want to be sure that we do have the PowerPoint for that one? Yes? Okay, we have it. Okay, great. So we're going to begin to change our, I'm sorry, with the indulgence of the board president, we're going to change our presentation to our second presentation this evening. You know, as you're walking out, Ms. Sotaro, you know, I do not like you just because you're a Mets fan and because you took Juan Soto from us, but I hope you get what you paid for. paid for. So, but for everybody else, we're going to switch our attention over to our Human Resources Department as we are led through our annual report as it relates to superb staff. It's important to understand that this presentation is the report of the accomplishments that have been made by the Human Resources Department in the 2023-24 school year. And then the second portion of that presentation will talk about where we are currently to date. So please keep in mind, a lot of the data that you're going to see is a report of the accomplishment of the Human Resources Department as it relates to our line item and our strategic roadmap of superb staff. And we are preparing that presentation to come to us now visually. So tonight, we're going to have this portion of our conversation led by our leaders in the Human Resources Department. That is going to be by our district leader of that department, our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Ms. Joan Garone, and supported by our Executive Director for Human Resources, Mrs. Tracy Jackson.
Hi, good evening. President Iñáñez, Board members, Superintendent Reynolds, Cabinet colleagues, colleagues and community members, thank you for the opportunity to present this evening on the strategic roadmap with regard to our superb staff. Our Executive Director for Human Resources, Tracy Jackson and I will be presenting some relevant information. Thank you. This presentation will cover the strategic goals that were set for the 2023-2024 school year, as well as accomplishments during that timeframe. We will discuss our 24-25 goals and what have been the areas of focus for our department, as well as how we move forward in the current fiscal climate. As always, we are guided by our vision, mission and equity statement. We center ourselves around our whole child approach. Which focuses on the many facets of, of support, including academic, cognitive, social, emotional, physical, mental health and identity development of our students. Our guiding document is our strategic roadmap, which was developed in the 2022-23 school year with a five-year vision. Our primary goal in support of superb staff is to provide high-quality employment services and supports that create a diverse and fair workplace that recruits, develops and supports all staff and service to students. In the 23-24 school year, our goals were to implement a system of position control for 100% of district employees. This system allows for better tracking and monitoring of positions and vacancies. The redesign of our current educator orientation and induction program. We are in a cycle of continuous improvement, seeking to improve the onboarding and induction of staff. Implementation of automated onboarding and offboarding for 100% of our employees. In 2022, many of our processes were manual. Increased district-wide attendance audits by 100%. In doing this, we will highlight the importance of employee attendance on our students' performance. In order to achieve these goals, four objectives were created. Each objective is broken down into metrics. Objective A, to implement a position control management system, the baseline was 0%. Our five-year goal is 100%. In terms of assessing current practices and analyzing data as part of continuous improvement, we want to ensure that our data informs our decision-making. Our baseline was zero and our five-year goal was 100%. In terms of review and develop, developing an evaluation process for each group of employees, this goal includes all of our employee groups. As you can see, we had a baseline of 50% and a five-year goal of 100%. In terms of objective B, that objective is broken into four metrics. The first is to redesign and develop teacher orientation and induction program. Our baseline was 20%, our five-year goal being 100%. Second matrix is to provide job-relevant differentiated professional learning grounded in best practices. Our baseline was 0%, our five-year goal is 75%. The third metric is to create recruitment plans for hiring and expanding recruitment to diverse colleges and universities. Our baseline was 19 platforms with a five-year goal of 24 platforms. The last matrix was to review diversity demographics of our newly hired staff and faculty. Our baseline was 20% with a five-year goal of 100%. Objective C includes two metrics. The first metric is to automate and digitize employment processes and records. We had a baseline of 0% and a five-year goal of 100%. The second matrix is to assess and improve current onboarding and evaluation practices, processes and systems. We had a baseline of 20% and a five-year goal of 100%. The final objective, objective D, has two metrics. The first was to implement district-wide attendance audits and to enhance compliance and, and celebrate positive practices. We had a baseline of zero and a five-year goal of 100%. The second matrix was to develop an employee celebration calendar and practices beyond tenure and retirement. We had a baseline of zero and a five-year goal of 100%. At this point, I'd like to turn the presentation over to my colleague and partner, Executive Director for Human Resources, Tracy Jackson, who will discuss the HR Department's accomplishments during the 23-24 school year.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you. I don't like no applause. I'm just a little full, I have to say. There was a, an individual sitting there, you might have seen me hug her, Carmen King, who they referenced from Mercy University. Carmen King and I, we started as elementary teachers together 18 years ago. So that was just so wonderful to see her. But on to this. So how did we do during the 23-24 school year? In the next part of the presentation, I will share the superb staff's progress and accomplishments for fiscal year 24. Again, our goal was to provide high-quality employment service and supports that create a diverse and fair workplace that recruits, develops and supports all staff in service of students. We created a probationary review process, which engaged building and district-level administrators in thoughtful discussions regarding all of our pedagogic employees. We collaboratively reviewed formal and informal observations and performance evaluation data for all of our probationary employees. Administrators provided insight into the types of instructional supports, coaching and professional development that were provided to their staff members. They discussed the type of feedback that was shared and how the employees responded to that feedback to improve their instructional practices. And also during these meetings, we also reviewed employee attendance records because we know that the best teacher or clinician can only offer their best to our students if they are consistently present for our students. We created a human resource toolkit for our administrators. The toolkit included templates to standardize counseling memos, guidance for addressing discipline issues, and multiple examples of written communications for both staff members and families. The toolkit proved to be an easily accessible and valuable resource of support for our building and department leaders. We implemented Schoolfront, which is an automated, versatile onboarding and offboarding platform. And we are using it, and we are utilizing it for all of our pedagogic recruitment and hiring processes. All hiring supervisors were trained in March of 2024, and the program became fully operational by May of 2024. It streamlines and expedites the onboarding process, reduces paper, allows for shared access and electronic approval routings. It also standardizes the interview process and reduces costs associated with the storage of files. We received a grant to digitize all archived pedagogic personnel files. This enhanced the protection of personnel data, improved accessibility, there's no more digging through all those paper files that we had, and it made it easier to share data. We reduced storage costs and increased office space in the human resource office. As a result, we were able to remove all those large file cabinets. We also applied for and secured a grant to also digitize all archived civil service personnel files. We partnered with the New Rochelle Civil Service Commission to sponsor a collaborative civil, civil service job fair. This provided a wider pool of candidates for civil service hiring within the district. It also provided opportunities for relationship building between the district, the school district and the city of New Rochelle. We participated in the Lower Hudson Council School Personnel Administrator's Diversity Job Fair. Over 40 districts participated. Interested candidates, they self-selected. So they went in and they decided which school district they wanted to interview. We, last year, we interviewed approximately 190 candidates who chose to interview with New Rochelle last year. We were the most sought-out district. Dr. Reynolds presented on the topic of how to get your foot in the door with your cover letter and resume, and I also presented, I present on the topic of how to best prepare for an interview. And finally, we established position control. Position control allows the district to define, manage and track positions to ensure alignment with business objectives and facilitates informed workforce planning. So let's now look at the progress updates that occurred during the 23-24 school year by reviewing the metrics for each objective. Objective A was to streamline performance standards, observe and provide feedback and offer guidance for conducting evaluations. The first metric was to implement a position control management system, which organizes and tracks our workforce by position and job titles rather than by individual employees. Our baseline was at 100% because we did not have any employees in a position control management system prior to the 23-24 school year. But as of June 30th, 2024, we had 80% of our district employees in position control. This enhances workforce planning and management and improves budgeting and financial controls. The second metric was to assess our current practices and analyze data to improve our practices. Our baseline was at 0% because we decided to look at this with a fresh lens, fresh eyes. We discovered that many practices were in place because that is how it had always been done. We are currently reporting that we have progressed by 20%. To ensure that teacher observations are being conducted in a manner that meets all established deadlines and are distributed fairly among our supervisors, we have provided a tracking and assessment schedule that is carefully monitored and reminders are sent out to administrators to assist them with their responsibilities. We have also instituted a similar tracking and monitoring system to ensure that all district employees are compliant and completing their GCN trainings. Finally, we began restructuring our own human resource personnel to enhance the consistency of responses and processes and to create a more unified approach towards addressing HR-related matters. There was a culture of two sides of human resources, the civil service side and the certificated side of human resources. As a department, we have improved productivity and enhanced efficiency by doing this. We are now responding as one New Rochelle, not two separate New Rochelles. The third metric was to review and develop the evaluation process for each group of employees. For 50, 50% of our district employees, there is an established evaluation process. And we have reviewed more formalized evaluation processes for our non-represented employees, directors, assistant directors, assistant principals and clinicians. However, we have not reached an agreement yet as to what evaluation tools should be used, so we remain at our baseline there. Objective B was to expand recruitment, hiring and retention practices that attract diverse candidates. I'd like to first note that when we're speaking of attracting diverse candidates, many believe that only refers to race. Diversity means so much more. It could also mean, how many male teachers do we have that are teaching at the elementary level? Or how many female educators do we have that are teaching math and science? Diversity refers to different backgrounds, experiences and beyond. The first metric was to resign, redesign and develop new educator orientation introduction program. Our baseline was 20% and we are now at 40%. We did this in part by reinstituting the New Rochelle Bus Tour, which is led by our local historian. This has been a wonderful opportunity for our newly hired staff members to see and learn about the vibrant history, demographics and culture of the community that they will be working in. We also invited our curriculum and instruction team led by Dr. Olivine Roberts and Dr. Nicholas Krakow to not only formally welcome our new hires to New Rochelle, but to also present pertinent information that both motivated and inspired them. The second metric was to provide job-relevant differentiated professional learning grounded in best practices. Again, we set our baseline at 0% because we wanted to look at this with a fresh lens. We are at 20% along the way to our five-year goal of 75%. Our department developed the administrators toolkit, which I previously discussed as one of our accomplishments. The toolkit includes easily accessible electronic resources to support our administrators with many of their day-to-day responsibilities. Human resource, in conjunction with the Schoolfront Training Staff, provided professional development training to all hiring supervisors on the district's new automated onboarding and offboarding platform. So our colleagues would feel comfortable as we transitioned to this new way of onboarding. In addition, we provided professional development training to address FMLA legal updates and processing for the entire human resource staff. The third metric was to create recruitment plans for hiring seasons and expand recruitment to diverse colleges and universities. Our baseline included 19 platforms that were used for the expansion of the district's recruitment purposes. We have added Iona University and New York University Alumni Center as two additional recruitment platforms. Our goal is to add three additional platforms by the end of five years for a total of 24 platforms. The fourth metric was to review diversity demographics of newly hired staff and faculty. We established a baseline of 20% because, believe it or not, prior to the 21-20 school year, employee demographics data was not collected in an organized way, and the data that was collected, it wasn't clean. So during that year, the Human Resource Department began collecting and reviewing census data for all newly hired and current employees for the first time. The information was first presented during a Board of Education presentation during the 2023 school year by then Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Dr. Corey Reynolds, and last year by Joan Garone. Our department has continued to review the self-reported EEOC data and diversity reports for the city school district in New Rochelle, and we conduct a comparative analysis of not only our data, but also reported data for Westchester County and the state and New York. By doing this, we have achieved 90% of our objective. Objective C is to establish more robust and automated onboarding, hiring, performance management, compensation management to keep us marketable and competitive with regional school districts. The first metric for this objective was to automate and digitize employment processes and records. Our baseline was 0%. Our previous employment processes were all done on paper. Our personnel files were overstuffed, and assessing and sharing information was not an easy task. Last year, we applied for and received a grant that enabled the district to prepare, purge and scan approximately 210 cubic feet of archived pedagogical files that were stored in two large vaults in the Human Resource Office for many years. Our progress for this process is 40%. Our five-year goal is to do the same for our civil service archive files and then the active files for all employees. the active files for all employees. The second metric was to assess and improve current onboarding and evaluation practices, processes, and systems. Twenty percent was a baseline because while we use my learning plan for evaluation processes, our onboarding was, like I've said before, a completely paper process. To streamline, standardize, and enhance compliance of this process across the district, we now use the automated platform School Front for onboarding all of our pedagogic hiring, and as a result, we are currently halfway towards achieving our goal. Our final objective, Objective D, was to recognize staff's contributions and accomplishments. The first metric was to implement district-wide attendance audits to enhance compliance and celebrate positive practices. Our baseline was zero percent because attendance audits were not previously done for employees. Human Resources has since instituted annual attendance letters to all employees, including those at the highest levels. These attendance letters are to bring awareness to employees of their absences and their positive attendance records. Consistent monitoring of sick days, personal days, and vacation day requests, along with improved communication between the Human Resource Office and district employees, have contributed to having a positive impact on reducing employee chronic absenteeism and clarifying the district's expectations in regards to attendance. We are at fifty percent progress because our intent was to send attendance letters twice a year. We have not met this yet, but we do plan to moving forward. The second metric was to develop employees' celebration calendar and practices beyond tenure and retirements. Only retirements and tenure have been celebrated within the district, so our baseline was zero percent. Human Resources has been coming up with many creative and specific ideas on how we can celebrate employees beyond just their tenure and retirement, but we have not implemented them yet, so we remain at zero percent in terms of progress for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I will now turn the presentation back over to my partner and colleague Joan Garone to discuss the fiscal year, the twenty-five fiscal year strategic direction goals and key accomplishments.
Hi, thank you, Tracy. In terms of the, of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, stick with us, the presentation is almost there. So Tracy, if you wouldn't mind, we had four goals for this school year. Great. So we had four goals for this school year. Goal one is by June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, to finalize the onboarding of all employees and begin the offboarding process. This will streamline the process and make the return of school district property more efficient. In addition, we'll seek to increase exit surveys and allow staff to indicate if they want exit meetings with Human Resources. Our second goal is to align the attendance strategy and protocols among all schools to ensure equity and consistency for staff. Continue with the mid-year attendance audits while adding a total compensation letter to include employee attendance information for the prior school year. All of our schools have been doing a great job in highlighting the importance of staff attendance. A few schools have added extra steps in the process, which we are seeking to formalize across all schools. We have not yet provided salary letters to staff in the past. By doing so this summer, we will increase awareness of attendance as well. Our third goal is to digitize all civil service archival personnel records to allow the ease of access to files for exited staff. This will allow us a more streamlined way to retrieve files and will help with audit and budget processes. Goal number four, this one is near and dear to my heart, actually, to launch a program of support for employees experiencing difficult and challenging personal issues that prevent them from being their best selves for our students. This program will include training administrators to identify struggling staff members, resources in the form of a toolkit, and an infrastructure that includes a network of district, community, county, and statewide resources. This will help us enhance our employees' social, emotional experiences and provide needed resources during challenging times. This will help to, to bring back the human and human resources. Tracy is going to speak briefly about our accomplishments during this school year, and then I'll, I'll be wrapping up.
So we all know that life is a journey, which we travel through hills and valleys. Several months ago, the district as a whole and the Human Resource Department realized that we would be entering a valley. However, while we began entering the valley of planning for workforce reductions, we needed to also stay focused on the strategic direction goals established for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So now I will talk about some of the twenty-twenty-five hills or key accomplishments of the suburb staff as of April first, twenty-twenty-five. We fully implemented School Front, the automated onboarding system for recruiting, interviewing, and hiring all pedagogical staff. This has streamlined our onboarding processes, reduced paperwork, improved compliance, contributed to position control, and has enhanced the budgetary process for hiring. Two, we transferred the issuance of employee photo IDs to the Human Resource Office. This has enhanced conformity, strengthened security, and provided one stop to meet the needs for all of our new hires. They don't have to go building to building or department to department. It all happens in Human Resources. We began to digit, the digitization of all exited civil service staff personnel files. Like I said before, it has reduced storage costs, improved accessibility, and created an ease in sharing files and enhanced security of data. We partnered with the New Rochelle Civil Service Commission to sponsor a second civil service job fair. By doing this, we are building a cooperative alliance in our hiring efforts. We, and we also have access to a wider pool of candidates for civil service positions. We participated in the fifth annual Lower Hudson Council of School Personnel Administrator's Inclusivity and Diversity Educators Fair in support of the mandated special ed vacancies that we have. Our special education administrators, administrators interviewed candidates who self-selected to be interviewed by the City School District of New Rochelle during the job fair. By participating in this fair solely to fill our mandated special education vacancies, we were able to expand the candidate pool for those difficult to fill special education positions. We provided some legal workshops for the City School District and New Rochelle administrators and administrative colleagues from our neighboring districts. Workshop topics included best practices in investigations, discipline matters, social media concerns, DASL reporting, and how to manage suspected child abuse in an educational setting. We provided professional development opportunities for the district's clerical staff. Workshops include, included how to use Google Suite applications such as Google Forms, Google Sheets, Google Slides, and Google Docs to en, enhance communication, data organization, content creation, and collaboration. Workshops, one of my personal favorites, Canva, Pivot Tables, the VoIP phone system, and emergency response training were also offered. All workshops were led by our internal district experts during the summer. Participants were able to self-select the topics that they were most interested in, and shortly after the workshops ended, our colleagues already started asking us if we were going to do it again this summer, and we hope to. We developed community relationship partnerships to support administrative staff in handling challenges, challenging situations for our district employees. Some of our new partnerships include United Way, Feeding Westchester, the Westchester County Department of Community Mental Health, and the Director of Regional Safety presented on the topic of how to respond to employees in crisis during our administrators' leadership retreat. We streamlined the civil service onboarding process, very much needed, to expedite new employee placements. We reviewed our current practices within our own department and removed the obstacles that were slowing the onboarding process down to enable our new civil service hires to begin in their positions as soon as possible. We restructured roles and responsibilities amongst our colleagues. We looked at our own house a lot in the Human Resource Department to enhance overall efficiency, effectiveness, and processes. We provided well-received professional development for all of district's security staff in collaboration with Dr. Gail Joyner and her Student Support Services team. Topics included legal updates refer, regarding school security, utilization of proper restraints, and incident reporting. We also instituted, you know, we thought about new teacher orientation and how, or new educator orientation. So, you know, they come in August, they're all excited, we give them all this information, we're like, have a great year. But we talked, we, you know, we decided we need to give them opportunities to be with one another throughout the year. So we, we now hold quarterly meetings for our newly hired elementary teachers, our secondary teachers, and in our, and our administrators, our newly hired administrators, to provide support and a space for them to bond and share experiences that are unique to their cohorts. Now that I have shared the fiscal year twenty-five hills for the suburbs, suburb staff, I will turn it back over to my partner and colleague Joan Garone to discuss the valleys and upcoming
Thank you, Tracy. So in terms of the work, workforce reductions, this is a very difficult conversation. Unfortunately, the layoffs are inevitable. While our current fiscal landscape requires the district to reduce by up to two hundred positions, we will not be laying off two hundred staff members. Through retirements, attrition, and reshuffling staff to meet coverage needs, we will minimize layoffs where possible. The HR office has spent countless hours working with district and building-level leadership, carefully reviewing the staffing needs, analyzing district data, and gathering information to ensure that we are able to provide needed resources to support our colleagues. For our pedagogical staff, seniority in their tenure area is the only criteria that was considered during this process. I just want to repeat that because it's really important. In terms of our pedagogical staff, seniority in their tenure area is the only criteria that was considered. In terms of our notification plan, impacted staff members, yeah, thank you, impacted staff members will be notified by April eleventh, so that's next Friday at the latest. Human Resources will provide packets to those impacted by the workplace reductions to support them as they transition to other employment. We are also partnering with our HR colleagues in the region to identify vacancies in their districts that may align with our colleagues' certifications. We want to offer that level of support as much as possible, and we know that we have the best employees here in New Rochelle, and anyone would be happy and glad to hire them, so we want to help in that. It's not something that we are happy to do, but it's something that's necessary, and we want to support our colleagues as much as we can. A preferred eligibility list will be developed. That preferred eligibility list will be used, and staff will be recalled for up to seven years from this list. So what that means is if there are any vacancies in that tenure area in the next seven years, the people on that list are entitled to those positions and will be contacted and, and brought back to the district. The work, the workforce reductions will impact the entire New Rochelle community, either directly or indirectly. So, so now in moving forward, we would ask that everyone treat your colleagues with kindness, support, encouragement, and care during these very difficult times. Although these are challenging times, we will work together to get through it. We are one New Rochelle. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Garone. Do any of my colleagues have any comments or questions? Ms. Clayton?
I was just going to say, well done. I know that the off, off-the-grid part of it is the tough part, but the metrics and the diligence to the details is going to ensure a long-term strategy for a great staff and building and team building, all the things that allow sustainability to have a vision and chart its course and keep its course. So props to your team for such laser focus.
Thank you.
To such a difficult task.
Thank you. Do any of my colleagues have any comments or questions? Ms. Williams?
Hi. Thank you very much, Mrs. Jackson and Mrs. Garone, for that excellent presentation. And thank you to Human Resources for really supporting our superb staff. And also, you know, these are sad times and where we have inevitable layoffs. So thank you very much for preparing the Human Resources resource packet for our colleagues, our friends, our teachers, who may be losing their jobs sadly. And also, thank you for leaving the door open for their return.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any other of my colleagues? No. Ms. Castellano Manaya?
Just quickly, one item I noticed, and I know this is, that everyone in this room must be feeling, feelings of conflict. You know, on one hand, yes, we're systematizing, supporting, improving recruitment, hiring, retention, but that's also coupled with the hard reality of having our budget be in the state that it's in right now, and I just want to acknowledge that. So I'm not going to sugarcoat anything, but I am going to say that I was grateful to hear that the folks that are doing the professional learning are internal. I think that there's something to be said about that. That came across at Jefferson, and it came across even in what you shared in the HR presentation, that our staff is so superb and has the answers right in the room, in-house, and I really appreciate that. That has actually been a theme that I'm taking away from tonight, and I truly hope that that continues. In terms of differentiated professional learning, I saw that also happening, and I appreciate that because one size does not ever fit all for our educators, and having teacher voice, educator voice in what that professional learning looks like is going to be so critical in terms of this next stage of professional learning in our district. When educators are doing more, play more roles, have so many more constraints as teachers in the classroom in terms of our, meeting our students' strengths but also their needs. So I did just want to appreciate that point of our internal collective wisdom and strength. Thank you for acknowledging that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Castellano Manaya. Seeing no other comments, Dr. Reynolds, it's over to you to close it out.
Thank you very much for those questions and reflections. I stand beside and behind our Human Resources team. Oftentimes in a district, there is this sense of pride and excitement because the Human Resources team is usually the first to have conversations with incoming employees. They're usually the first to say welcome to your new home. They're usually the first. They're usually the first to say, we are happy to see you and you're here. But the equal amount of responsibility to be the messenger in times of difficulty rests in that department. And with that being said, I want to thank our two leaders for your stalwart approach to this difficult situation that we're currently in. But more importantly, I would like to request from our colleagues that, and I don't, this probably, I don't, I won't use that term, please do not fault the messengers because the task that this team will have to undertake over the next few days, next weeks, are very difficult, and it's not the one that anyone signs up for. So with that, I would like to thank you for your presentation this evening, and again, thank you for your attention and your heart that you're putting into this. With that, to our board members, we are going to transition back. With that, to our board members, we are going to transition back. No? Oh, we do have one more.
Yeah, District Budget, Annual School District Budget Vote and Election Presentation.
So, this evening, we're going to have our third and final presentation. This evening, we are joined by our district clerk, Ms. Millie Vanea, who's going to lead us down a discovery of our annual school district budget vote and election process.
Okay. Bear with me, I will be short and straight to the point. So I will be presenting on this year's annual school district budget vote and election. So to start off, to execute an election of this size does take a lot of help and support, so these lovely ladies make up our election team. This is Ms. Vicki Shankman, who is actually a certified election inspector with the county of elections, and she works at New Rochelle High School. Ms. Shankman, can you stand up and say hello? That's Vicki. We also have Ms. Anna Santiago, who's the executive secretary to the superintendent, as well as part of the Board of Registrations. Ms. Santiago couldn't be here tonight, but she is an amazing member of the team. We have Ms. Rolanda Sabri, who's the assistant to the clerk and secretary, as well as part of the Board of Registrations. Rolanda, can you please stand up? And we also have Ms. Barbara DeRaffely, who works in accounts payable and rounds out our Board of Registration. She also could not be here tonight. And a special thanks to Mr. Leal and Mr. Watkins. So Mr. Leal, as you know, is our Assistant Superintendent for Business, and Mr. Watkins is our Director of Social Security. The both of them work very, very closely with our office and just making sure everything is secure, all things election, whether it be signs, vendors, anything, facilities for the day of, so kudos to them as well. So a little bit of background for the election, for those that do have a question about a certain things that have come up. So, we are governed by educational law, so we do follow statute that the New York State sets forth for us. So the annual election this year is taking place on Tuesday, May 20th, 2025, and it is actually every single year, the third Tuesday of May. So that is a date that is designated by New York State to hold the election. There are other educational laws that we adhere to, so all the protocol that we follow, whether it be for electioneering, for the conduct of the election, the 100-feet markers, privacy booths, ballot boxes, making sure they're handled and stored correctly, is all governed by educational law. Another thing to note is, there have been questions, again, about the signs. You do see signs around town in English and Spanish. The reason for that is because there was recently an investigation into the school districts by the Department of Justice, which deemed certain counties in Westchester, Nassau, Suffolk, and Monroe to be predominantly Spanish-speaking. Therefore, our materials do have to be translated in English and Spanish. That is a large part of what Ms. Santiago, myself, and others in the district do do to make sure that all materials are in English and Spanish, again, as instructed by law. So, a little bit about voter registration. So if it's your first time voting, or you're interested in voting, what makes you a qualified voter? So you do have to meet the following criteria. You have to be a citizen of the United States, you should be 18 years older, and you should be a resident of the district within 30 days preceding the election, and you otherwise cannot be prohibited from voting. So if you would like to register, you would register online with either the Department of Motor Vehicles or with the Westchester County Board of Elections, who are located in White Plains, New York. If you're not interested in voting for all elections and you would just like to vote in this school election, there is personal voter registration, which is, again, solely for school district elections. So that will take place on Monday, May 5th, between 4:00 and 8:00 p.m. in City Hall and the second floor. Now, the deadline to register to vote overall, so to vote in order to be able to for this election, is Tuesday, May 6th, 2025. Now to cover our polling locations, our district is divided into 13 different polling sites, which we like to call SEDs, or School Election Districts. So these are the 13 polling locations. We have SED 1, Barnard School, SED 2, Columbus School, SED 3, Davis School, SED 4, Jefferson School, SED 5, which is a change from last year, it is no longer 95 Lincoln, we are at the Remington Boys and Girls Club, SED 6, which is New Rochelle High School, SED 7, Trinity School, SED 8, Albert Leonard Middle School, SED 9, Webster School, SED 10, Isaac Young Middle School, SED 11, New Rochelle Fire Station or 45 Harrison Street, SED 12, Ward School, and SED 13, 570 Fifth Avenue. So the SEDs that are designated with the star are non-school polling locations, which are three of them. And as always, polls open from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. That is also something that is regulated by law, the amount of hours that we need to be open for the election for the polling sites. Now to highlight, again, SED 5 is a change this year, so it's at the Remington Boys and Girls Club, this is the club. We actually will go through the website quickly towards the end of the presentation, and all of the polling locations have these illustrations that we worked on and designated with the orange triangles, the green, or the blue to tell you where the entrance is, where you would look for a "Vote Here" sign, and where there is parking. So at every location, there is designated parking, even if it's not our polling location. For example, at SED 11, the fire station, we did work with New Rochelle the city to block off parking on the street. So you would just look for certain places, like here, that there's construction, it will not affect it at all, just look for the orange sign. That is an example of the sign, there are big orange billboards, literally about my size, so you cannot miss them, as well as parking will be designated with voting parking. And then throughout the district, you will see those purple banners, which is what you see on the left, reminding you to vote. Those will go up in a couple of weeks, in the beginning of May, and they are also available, as we said before, in Spanish. So, early male and absentee voters, if you cannot come to vote on the day of the election, you are encouraged to request an absentee or an early male application. So absentee ballots are automatically sent to anybody who is on the permanently sick and disabled list. However, you can request an absentee ballot, you can also request an early male ballot. So what is the difference? The only difference is that the early male does not require you to have a qualifying reason. For both of them, however, and this did start last year, you see a little more information there about the New York Early Male Voter Act, which took place January 1st and has now been implemented, for both of them, you do need to request an application first. So step one, you would request an application, complete it, and return the application, and then step two, you would complete and return the ballot. All applications for both early male and absentee can be found on the district webpage, you can download them there, or you can pick up a copy at the district clerk's office, which again is in City Hall on the second floor. All applications must be signed by the voter, and they can only be returned in mail or in person. They cannot be returned via email. And you also may authorize a person to pick up the ballot, other than yourself. So when you download the application or you pick it up, we can point that out for you, it is towards the middle of the application, and you designate a specific person. That person solely can come pick up the ballot for you if you are unable to do so. Okay. And for the deadlines on the early male and absentee, so we are not able to accept any of these applications, as we said, they are already available in the office for pickup or online, but we cannot accept them before Monday, April 21st. The applications, and again, I want to preface this as "applications," to receive the ballot are due by Tuesday, May 13th, if the ballot is to be mailed to the voter, and by Monday, May 19th, if the ballot is to be personally delivered. Now, all actual ballots, so all early male or absentee ballots have to be in to the office of the district clerk by no later than 5:00 p.m. on the day of the election. I want to also note that that is to the district clerk's office, so 515 North Avenue, not any of the polling places. Do not drop off your ballot at the polling places. The reason for this is, every single ballot is coded with a personal code, and we do need to scan it to acknowledge that it has been received. If you drop it off in a polling place, we cannot guarantee that it is going to be received by our office at 5:00 p.m. So please drop it off at the office, not at a polling location. Now, as you know, we not only are voting for the budget, but we are also voting for candidates for the board. So if you are interested in running for the Board of Education, both packets for the Board of Education and for the New Rochelle Public Library Board of Trustees, because we do run both elections, are available for pickup at the district clerk's office, and you can download the packet also as well on our website, or you can come pick them up in-house. So anybody who is running, all candidates, must have a minimum of 100 signatures from qualified voters. All of the packets are due by Wednesday, April 30th, that is, close of business, 5:00 p.m., Wednesday, April 30th. We need to have your packets with all of the signatures. And a little info about the board, so the board is comprised of nine members who run at large. Now, running at large basically means that you are not running for a specific seat. So currently, there are two open seats, and they are both full terms. It will be beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending on June 30th, 2025. And for the New Rochelle Board, it is comprised of seven members who also run at large, who are not running for a specific seat. There's currently one open seat, it is also a full term, so beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending on June 30th, 2025.
30:30.
Sorry, what did I say?
20:30.
Oh, 30:30. Okay. And for more information, you can attend the public hearing on the proposed 25-26 school budget. That public hearing is going to take place on Tuesday, May 6th, at 7:00 p.m. at New Rochelle High School, I believe it is the Whitney Young Auditorium? Right? Okay. You also can find information, which we'll go through in a minute, on the district webpage. There is a tab that says, "2025 Annual Board of Education Election and Budget Vote," and then we click on a tab that says, "BOE Candidate Information." Again, we'll go through that in a second. You can also find more information in the legal notice, which again, we print in English and in Spanish, in both the Journal News and Westchester Espanol newspaper, four times during April and May. The first publishing is actually going to be tomorrow, April 4th, so you could look out for that if you do receive the Journal News. Or you can contact my office or via email and answer more questions. So, tech, if you can click on the link there, it should bring you to our webpage. So this is on our webpage. So if you keep scrolling down, you'll see there's information about the election, what the Board of Education does. The legal notices are available there in English and Spanish. The legal notices have a little more in-depth information about the day of the election. Right there, Board of Education Candidate Resources, you'll have the entire packet for whether you're running for the board, if you keep scrolling down. Oh, and to the right are all the election laws that I was referencing before. And if you keep scrolling down, there's the packets for the New Rochelle Public Library. All the way down to the left, you're going to see the ballot information, so the application for absentee, early male, or military application, if you need. And then if you would just click on the right, where it says, "Click here for polling sites" in that box, yes, right there. So that pulls you up to those illustrations that I was saying, so we worked on this, to make sure that everybody knows exactly where you are looking for in your polling site, where you would go in, where you would park, and if it's in the gymnasium in a coral room, where exactly it is within the building. And if you could just go back again. So right on top, you will see, "Find Your School Election District." This is something that we started doing last year with NTS. Click on "Find Your School Election District." Okay. So if you click on, "Where Do I Vote?", if you are unsure of where to vote, because some of the places are a little bit different than the general elections, you would type in your address, and it'll give you your polling location. So for example, if you type in 33 La Count Place, that is the address for New Rock, so we're just going to use New Rock as an example. So it's 33 La Count Place, and you do have to type in the full New Rochelle in order for it to pick up, but 33 La Count Place, L-E-C-O-U-N-T Place. And then New Rochelle? Oh, and it came right up. So it says, "Polling Place 11," which is Fire Station, and it'll give you a little map on where to get there. So that's really helpful if you're wondering where exactly your polling location is. And if you could go back to the presentation? Okay. A reminder, the election for the fifth time is Tuesday, May 20th, 2025. We do encourage you to come out and vote. And I told you I'd be quick, so if you have any questions or comments, now's the time.
I also just want to piggyback and say that we do mail out a budget newsletter as well, that will have each polling location and information about that as well. Do any of my colleagues have any comments or questions? Seeing none, thank you so much, Ms. Vanea.
So it's premature before. At this time, we are going to transition our board members back to the dais. We're going to bring over the podium to the center aisle, set it up with a microphone. The podium should be facing me, and I remind the community to please direct during public comment, your questions or comments directly to me.
Great. Next up on our agenda is public comment. I'm going to read a brief statement, and then we will go into our first speaker. Ladies and gentlemen, we are about to convene into the public comment period of the meeting. The Board of Education adopted policy 1230 in April 2022 to ensure all members of the public had the opportunity to speak at both of our board meetings each month. We believe... Sorry, hold on one second, I apologize, I did skip the first readings. Really quickly, we have two items for discussion, the first readings, policy number 4321.12, use of timeout rooms, and first reading of policy number 550, student records. So these are both mandated updates from NISBA, the New York State School Boards Association. The only real changes are what we are legally now required to change and aligning it with NISBA and Education Law 2D. So colleagues, you can look at the attachments on our board docs, and if you have any questions, please let myself or Ms. Williams, Chair of the Policy Committee, know, and we can get them answered for you before the next meeting, where we'll be doing the second reading and voting these as policy. The other two that are on the agenda are our second readings, policy number 0100, nondiscrimination and equal opportunity, and policy number 5605, voter registration for students. So we went over these at our last meeting, and today we're doing our second reading, and we will be voting on these in our consent agenda tonight. Does anyone have any questions or comments about any of those policies? All right, seeing none, I apologize. Let me go back to the statement. So the Board of Education adopted policy 1230 in April 22 to ensure all members of the public had the opportunity to speak at both of our board meetings each month. We believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, understand the board will not respond to your comments, your concerns and questions tonight. We take your concerns and questions seriously and want to have sufficient time to process and research issues if need be. We will, however, respond to your questions and concerns at a future meeting, or if the proper staff member gets back to you at the appropriate time. I also want to point out that under-stating from privacy laws, we are unable to entertain any comments or questions about school personnel and students. Please know, however, that we take personal concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to go through the appropriate administrative channels. Finally, we recognize that right now, our nation and our community are polarized on a number of issues. That said, we want our school board meetings to serve as an example to our students that members of our school board and members of our community can deal with controversial issues in a civil manner and demonstrate mutual respect for one another. In that spirit, we will insist that all speakers and members of the audience maintain maintain civility and respect for any divergent views that others possess. We ask that speakers please address their comments to the board directly rather than the audience. In the unlikely event the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess the meeting and return once order has been restored. Finally, I want to remind everyone that you may submit written comments to the board in lieu of speaking during the public comment period if you so choose. Tonight, we've set aside 45 minutes for public comment, where each speaker who has signed up before 3:30 today has three minutes to speak. If a person requests to speak after 3:30, you may sign up in person at the meeting with the clerk and will be afforded the opportunity to speak tonight. Our first speaker of the night is Ms. Cheryl Smith.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Smith, and I'm a science teacher at Elbert Leonard Middle School and the FUSE Negotiations Chair. I also sat on a school board for 18 years. So I know as a school board trustee, it's important to understand the annual budget. But just as important, a trustee must examine each month's expenses by department, because a lot can be concealed there. So let's examine some of those expenses. Visit City Hall any day of the week, and you'll find multiple attorneys from the law firm of Ingraham &amp; Smith in every district department. Upon this previous superintendent's departure in '23, this law firm, like the insidious virus it is, seized the opportunity to infect each department in this district. Why? Well, let's just look at the details of their retainer. Most law firms work on a set fee structure with almost all services included in that retainer. Ingraham &amp; Smith's retainer is approximately $1 million and includes virtually nothing. The true cost is carefully buried in their monthly expenses, hundreds of billable hours buried across each and every district department. Ingraham &amp; Smith is running away with this district's money. So how can we cut expenses? Well, first, go out to bid for new legal representation. But let's keep going. Let's keep going. Next, cut administration. A central administration that's gone from 14 central administrators in 2018 to 42 today. A 300% increase. Why do we have multiple administrators who duplicate services? Multiple central administrators for the same department? At a time when buildings and classrooms are facing extreme cuts, why are we maintaining redundant administrative positions? Think back to your own school days. Who made a difference for you? Maybe it was a teacher, a counselor, maybe an aide or a teaching assistant, a security guard, or even that kindly custodian you knew. I honestly don't know who you remember. But I guarantee that not one of you thought back and remembered the executive director of Support Services or any of the other 42 central administrators. There's an old saying, "Show me your budget, and I'll show you what you value." So what does this board value? Does this board value the people in school buildings who are making the difference for our kids every day? The people you all just remembered? This budget says no. So to this board, I say, "New Rochelle voters are watching, and I do not believe they support these cuts." We all want to pass this budget for our kids, but only you have the power to make that happen. And to pass that budget, you need to reexamine those budget choices...
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
...and have the courage to match the budget to what kids need and New Rochelle voters value.
Thank you. Next up is Ms. Filomena Daniele.
Good evening. Phil Daniele, Member of FUSE Leadership and proud English teacher in the New Rochelle School District, where we have a superb staff, to use your words, who you are willing to lose. Let me begin with one simple but vital word that means everything: trust. Trust is the most essential element that you need in any partnership. However, it isn't easily attained. It takes hard work. It must be fostered in a respectful and truthful way. It signifies integrity, service, and love. The New Rochelle community thought that this kind of trust was forged here. However, the events over the past few weeks have sadly shown otherwise. At first, the community was told that there would be colossal cuts. But at the Davis PTA meeting, it was shared that there are going to be significantly less. And tonight, yet we were given another picture about the budget cuts. The problem is that no matter what budget is being presented, sacrifices are still being demanded on the backs of their children, but not on the backs of a superfluous and bloated administration. While the New Rochelle community does not trust this update, they have lost trust in the administration who have been given the privilege of leading this stellar school district and now are trying to dismantle it. The entire community feels betrayed, including employees who are dedicated to our children and our families. They have been holding it together through unbearable stress and the possibility of tremendous loss, loss of employment, financial stability, but also the loss of engaging in everyday relationships with colleagues and, most importantly, beloved students. We are not part of a building. We are part of a Jefferson family, a Davis family, an Isaac and Albert family, and we care for our kids like they're our own. So, tonight, you have the opportunity to repair this chasm by making choices that show our students that they win. The acting head of the Newburgh School District, with 12,000 students, have proposed downsizing the 38-person administration to 30 for the sole purpose of hiring more staff in the classrooms. These are the actions that warrant trust, because they scream "children first." Budget decisions should be all about making the absolute best choices for our students, not just for this year, but for the next year and for the future years, so that this debacle never happens again. Our community turns to you for the best for their kids. So if you want their support, you must prove yourselves. You must save our undeniably essential superb staff...
Thank you, Ms. Daniele. Thank you.
...if you want a yes for the budget. Thank you.
Next up is Ms. Brenda Di Giacomo.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Di Giacomo. I'm a mother. I'm a community member. I graduated from our school. I had many, many family members also graduate from our school. I had two girls. My twins graduated from Ugonat Academy last year. They were struggling. Now, they're on the president's honor roll at Monroe University. One had a 3.9 GPA. The other one had a 4.0. Why? Because of our teachers. First of all, I want to apologize. I did make a mistake at the Davis meeting. Ugonat Academy does have a nurse right now, so I apologize for that. But the only reason why we do have a nurse is because of a kid with a medical issue. The parent did reach out to me, so I want to apologize for that. When I'm wrong, I'm wrong. So I take action, just like everyone else should take actions for their mistakes. I want to understand some things. We're saying we're firing people for performances, for absences. Well, some of those people could show you medical records while they were absent. So if they could come back with medical records while they're absent, why are we letting them go? We're telling some people we're letting them go for their performance? Well, one, one teacher showed me today how she was getting let go. But all her performances that I've seen had three or fours. So that's not poor, that's not poor to me. That's great. So we're not really putting in consideration what we're doing. We're hurting our teachers, but most importantly, we're hurting our children by taking away the teachers that give them a great education. But then, people that are getting written up, getting from school to school to school across the problem, how come they're still in our district? How come they're not letting go? And as many times as I spoke about this problem, not one of you people reached out to ask me, "Is a problem being solved?" What are, who are you talking about? Because we can't mention the name here, but no one wants to reach out to find out what it is. But she's still in our district, and she's not the one letting go. I stand for our teachers, our staff, and our students who need this education. Because my girls wouldn't be where they were today if it wasn't for elementary school to high school and our teachers busting their butt with them. So I put in an extra effort, stayed after school. On COVID, teachers would go online and work with them because they were failing doing online. I don't see any of us trying to help them now. And I know it's budget cuts, but maybe we could find other ways to cut the budget instead of cutting off the teachers that we need and let the teachers and staff go that are getting written up and don't do good for our students when we have these are here at night fighting for their jobs and fighting for our kids' education.
Thank you, Mr. Giacomo. Next up is Mr. Vincent Malfattano.
Good evening. A 45-year resident. My kids went through the system. Proud UFT, Union Man, teacher in New York City for 40 years, retired. I sat where these folks sat, and I went through what they went through. Just a couple of things. I've been trying to influence this board for many years, to no effect. But just a couple of thoughts. First of all, I enjoyed the presentation, Ms. Neves and the Jefferson kids. That's always a nice thing. The May 6th meeting, you have a regular meeting, and then separately, a public hearing. You should have public speaking at both meetings. I hope you realize you're obliged to have a separate meeting for the public hearing, and you don't roll it in. Of course, unfortunately, no news yet from our Democratic leaders in Albany, who are fronting around like fools while we all go crazy down here. Let's hope they finally get off their rear ends and do something right. A couple of thoughts. Mr. Superintendent, I do appreciate your willingness to go back and forth with me online about some of my questions. But I have asked for you to please outline for the community how many positions you intend to fund or reduce for each budget line. I went through the budget, and I sent you a list of budget codes for various positions, and I asked for some detail. You ought to be able to give us some idea. Since you have a number of a budget, you know what positions drove that budget. So please, let's not leave everybody in the dark before we vote. I noticed a $3.2 million new expense for a private school. I asked you what schools and how many kids. I don't want to know the kids, but I do want to know. I gave you the budget code. What schools that's for and how many kids? The busing situation, of course, is an ongoing fiasco. And you guys have been negligent in properly addressing the ballooning monstrous costs. 25% increase this year alone. Buses that are empty, and no rule, regulation proposed to change that insanity. I saw the presentation by the Human Resources people about the various things they're trying to do, the diversity. It's all nice and said, "It's more than just race. It may be male and female." But I've asked you guys, what is a woman? How does the Human Resources Department even know what a woman is? So please, don't tell me you're going to have male... You don't even know what it is. You can't define it, or you're too afraid to. I don't know what it is. So please, folks, let's try to get real with our community and not fool around. I've been coming to these microphones for nearly 40 years. And one size fits all. The same people get elected, nothing changes, people.
Thank you, Mr. Malfattano. Next up is Ms. Otilia Taylor Tanner.
So good evening. And I agree with Joan and Tracy. We have the best staff. We have the best teachers in New Rochelle. That's beyond question. It's not just about the salaries. It's because we have dedicated individuals. But I'm just going to focus a little bit regarding special education. So we have new students and new families in New Rochelle, and we are ignoring that need. And during the time that we're letting go of superb staff, includes teachers, aides, and teaching assistants, we're not prepared to support the students that we now have new students and new families in our city. And a lot of those students are coming to schools with lots of different issues. So I think that we should just be a little careful about how we're doing things. We cannot afford to lose teachers, aides, and teaching assistants. And having said some of that, I do appreciate Resolution Number 25-320-5, which will increase the hourly wage for some of our hourly workers. So hourly special ed workers have some of the dirtiest jobs in the district. So I appreciate the fact that you're recognizing and hearing that a lot of these cuts will affect our civil service employees. So I appreciate a little bit more money that they're being offered. And I thank you. I don't know who to thank for that. I don't know if it's Tracy Jackson, Joan Garone, the Board of Ed, or Billy Coleman and FUSE and Mary. But I appreciate that, and I think that they appreciate that as well. I also want to say thank you to Michelle O'Brien, because recently, this year alone, we've had at least three very, very good professional development workshops. And that was very essential. So that's essential in us doing our job, especially with the influx of the students that we have. So we're getting more students, students who are new to the city, students who are coming with different types of issues, and during a time that we're going to lose people. So I just want to make sure that we're really clear about that. I want to acknowledge the things that are being done that's positive, that's affecting students. And I want to make sure that we're really clear about this budget and what's happening with our budget and those of us that live here, and how we're going to respond to this budget. But we have to do something differently. We cannot think that we're going to lose teachers, teaching assistants, aides, custodians, lunch monitors, nurses, the secretaries. We can't afford to do that. I think we should be very careful about what we're doing and how the outcome, how we're going to affect our students, especially when we're having new students coming into the city. And we're not done with the new students. We're still getting more new families here. So that's just what I wanted to just add some of those points. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor Tanner. Is there anybody else? Did anybody else like to sign up for public comment tonight? Yep, Ms. Miriam De See.
Where is she? Oh, wait, I'll give it to you later. Good evening, Miriam De See. I want to say first that the performance was wonderful, as always. My little cousin was up there singing. That was great. I did wonder, you had two tenured teachers who were social, social workers, and they're bilingual. And both are, I'm assuming, Spanish-speaking from the names and stuff. But my young cousin is bilingual, and she's English and French-speaking. So I often wonder, how do we support those students? In fact, not too long ago, I had to go in and help at one of the schools because we have such a student. And that social worker was there, was bilingual, but spoke Spanish. And this child is Haitian-speaking Creole. And when I asked, "Well, do we have anybody else to support them?" They're like, "Well, these cases don't happen that often." And I'm like, "You have these cases in front of you right now." So we need to be able to, as we're hiring with diversity, make sure that we're hiring to meet the needs of all the kids. So that's one. Secondly, this... The only thing I could say about this HR presentation is, is where is the data? I have to say that. When we had only one HR personnel, Dr. Joe Williams, we knew exactly what the attendance data was, who had perfect attendance for how many years, who had been here for what time, with the demographics of our teaching staff, of our security staff, civil service. We had all that reported to us. This 0% and 50% target or base of what? Like, you can't just throw... Like, you can't just throw out percentages like that as a measurement, and you don't say, "It's a percentage of what? How are you measuring these?" This is so unacceptable. We need some STEM teaching to go on here. So that was that one. Lastly, when we talk about the budget, last week, or, yeah, when you said you would listen to everybody, you wanted to hear them. And then you proceeded to vote yes and approve a budget. That was so flawed and so much as outstanding. Even this week, you have some new data. You could have waited one more week after you heard everybody's cries and pleas to better understand what's going on, what we should do. Instead of voting for it and then putting it on us and saying, "We can't have a contingency budget. Nobody wants that. Nobody wants to short the schools." So you should have waited to make sure we have an accurate budget before you voted it.
Thank you, Ms. De See. Would anybody else like to sign up for public comment tonight? Ms. Cook?
I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but I know there are at least 111 people either in this room or listening who want some kind of hope and who want some answers and who want to know that they matter. So I appreciate that you've made an effort to really find outstanding people to bring to this district. And I will say that you did a great job. You brought them here. They're in our schools. They are crying in the halls. They are having scared conversations in pockets. The atmosphere is somber. And I was hoping, I keep hoping, that something is going to change for them because they deserve better. And not just to be... Not just to be on a list for seven years so they could come back, because they're not. Once they leave here, they're not coming back. And we really did make an effort to bring the best of the best. And we are failing as a district if we allow them to go elsewhere, to bring their towns to other districts. We need them here. We need them here. We want to be competitive. We're trying to keep people from leaving this school system and going off to the charter school, going to private school, whatever. We are going to lose that battle if we do not hold on to the superb staff that we have made an effort to bring into our district. And for anybody who's listening, know that we see you. We appreciate you. And we really, really are hoping that something changes to keep you here. Thank you.
Ms. Cook. Last call. Anybody else for public comment? Just state your name at the podium, please.
Good evening. My name is Giovannina De Zenzo. Oh, sorry. Everyone knows me as Jenny De Zenzo. I'm an employee at Trinity Elementary School. I'm an alumni at Nurichelle Elementary School. I'm a mom of three who also went through Nurichelle Schools. Proud mom. I'm a resident. A grandma of a new student who's going to be going to Barnard. So I'm here for her. I'm a TA. I'm a one-on-one this year because there is no one for this student that I'm an advocate for. So I'm here for this child. It's very hard. I should have been... I'm a math... I'm missing math AIS because I've been placed to be a one-on-one. So I plead with you. I am so proud of you for showing up at our schools. I'm proud of my principal, my staff, of our schools, Nurichelle District. So I plead with you that you guys find some way to pass this budget, do something, because Nurichelle will not pass this budget. We are tired. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a single parent right now. I lost my husband to COVID. I cannot do this. My heart is broken. It's very hard for me. I have learned to go on. My parents were separated. I've had so much to be strong about, and I still go on. I've had so much help through the school district for myself. I was in ESL myself. Did not speak any English. Came from a foreign country. So I work, and we're talking about having to figure things out for these kids that come from other countries out of the box every day. I do it every single day, including today, making a packet to make it work for each individual child. We know what the standards are, but it's our job to try to make these kids go on, to give them faith every single day. We all matter, and we all try to figure it out. We try... I try to tell my kids every single day, including today, "Don't let anybody tell you that you can't do anything." Every single day, whatever you feel like doing, you do it. Don't let anybody tell you any different. So I plead with you today, and I appreciate you visiting our schools, and you came... you come to our school, our principal. We love him. That strength that he gives us every single day, that's what makes our day. So we appreciate you. Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is New Business Consent Agenda Personnel Resolutions. Colleagues, can I get a motion in a second to approve consent agenda for general... Approve Consent Agenda Personnel Resolutions Number 25-316, 1 through 2, Number 25-317, 1 through 11, Number 25-318, 1 through 1, Number 25-319, 1 through 5, and Number 25-320, 1 through 10, according to the recommended action for each item.
So moved Castellanaminaya.
Second, Clayton Fernandez.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Before we move on to the next item, though, we just want to highlight a resolution that we just voted for. Do you want to say, Dr. Reynolds? Or do you want me?
Thank you very much for the opportunity. While there's movement in the room, I would like for us to recognize an individual who's in this room. This evening, we voted to approve the recommendation of the promotion of our new Director of Security, Mr. Rob Beinum, who's standing in the back of the room. Now Director Beinum has served in the role of Assistant Director for many years, and he has really helped to bring heart and security to our children and our staff throughout the district. And tonight, it is our pleasure to announce that he has been promoted to Director, and we look forward to his leadership as the district continues to move forward. Thank you very much, Mr. Beinum.
Congratulations to Beinum. Next up on the agenda is our New Business Consent Agenda for General Resolution. So colleagues, I'm going to do a consent agenda, and then we're going to do two roll call votes. So colleagues, can I get a motion in a second to approve Consent Agenda for General Resolutions, Number 25-321 through Number 25-345, according to the recommended action for each item?
So moved, Ross.
Second, Clayton Fernandez.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So next up, we are going to Resolution Number 25-346. It's a resolution to declare the district is lead agency meeting the standards of SECRA 6, Part 617. It'll be a roll call vote. So colleagues, can I get a motion in a second to approve Resolution Number 25-346?
So moved, Castellanaminaya.
Second, Ross.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Anuzi?
Yes.
Ms. Castellanaminaya?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton Fernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Single?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Dr. Reynolds?
No. No, he doesn't vote on it.
Sorry, he was there.
No, it's okay. But the motion carries. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So this next resolution, that's a roll call vote, this is going to be Proposition 2 on the ballot, which is purchasing the property, the street, the road around the Nurichelle High School football fields for $1. Colleagues, can I get a motion in a second to approve Resolution Number 25-347?
So moved, Castellanaminaya.
Second, Ross.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Anuzi?
Yes.
Ms. Castellanaminaya?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton Fernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Single?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our next meeting is going to be on Thursday, April 24th. At 6 o'clock is the executive session, 7 o'clock the public session at Ward Elementary School. Tonight, we are adjourning our meeting in memory of Francine Fersko, a retired school psychologist at Barnard School who passed away on February 27th, 2025; Patricia Zaghi, a retired teacher at Davis who passed away on March 4th, 2025; Mildred Brown, a retired Assistant Superintendent of Pupil Personnel and Curricular Services who passed away on March 4th, 2025; John Sullivan, a retired teacher at Isaac Young Middle School who passed away on March 7th, 2025; Toby Myers, a retired pre-K teacher at Barnard School who passed away on March 15th, 2025; and Lorna Ferrara, a retired special education aide and teaching assistant at Ward School who passed away on March 18th, 2025. Colleagues, can I have a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting?
So moved, Williams.
Second, Castellanaminaya.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good night, everyone.